Public Business Matters, as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting, were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board during the closed meeting. Do I have a motion? Motion made by Ms. Keys-Gamar, seconded by Mr. Frisch. All those in favor. Ms. Tolan? Are you certifying closed? Yes. Okay. So that's all those present with Ms. Marin, Ms. Darrenak-Kofax, and Ms. McLaughlin away from the table. We are now back in session. I am calling on Mr. Frisch for a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that the School Board authorize settlement of Doe versus School Board according to the terms and conditions discussed with legal counsel in closed session.
I have a second by Ms. Tolan. All those in favor? And that is unanimous with all those at the table with Ms. Marin and Ms. Darrenak-Kofax away. That motion carries. So with that, Ms. Keys-Gamar, are you managing this portion of the session? Yes, we do. Please get, please begin. Four, five, six, seven. Ms. Tolan, go for it.
Alrighty. If our Board members would please come to the table, we are ready to talk about our telecommunications presentation. FCPS, Wireless Telecommunications Facilities, our monopole program. And without further ado, we have until 4:30? Okay. So an hour and a half if they will give us... Yes. So we'd like to leave the last 30 minutes for next steps if at all possible. Mr. Plattenberg.
Well, thank you very much. Good afternoon, everybody. We're very fortunate to have a few folks here with us helping present about the monopole telecommunication facilities. I'd like to introduce Brian Bateo from Fairfax County Department of Planning and Development, and also Michelle Stahlhut, who's also with Fairfax County Department of Planning and Development, and then also our consultant independent third-party wireless telecommunications expert, Ken Schmidt from Steel in the Air, along with our staff, Bart Cordova and Tom Casey, who are the gurus for Fairfax County Public Schools on monopoles and what we do. Today's presentation really is an outcropping of the School Board's approval of the policy regarding monopoles that was done in December 10th of 2018. There was a follow-on motion for us to have a work session, and we've taken the time, it's taken us a few months, it kept getting deferred because of the pact agenda and then with the new elections and so forth, that we're happy to be here today to talk about it. There were two basic questions. Today, we're going to go over the, really, the overview of the monopole program, then we're going to have the two presentations, and then the recommendation and discussion. Today's monopole program overview is about the purpose of that 8335.4 that I mentioned that was revised in December of 2018. The narrative in there talks about providing access. There were a couple of things that the governance group that was working with it really covered. A lot of it was School Board opportunity for input earlier on, and then also expanding and expansion of the communication process associated with it. The monopole program by the numbers, if you look at when it started, in 1996, the first monopole was installed in Langley High School. Today, we've got 35 monopoles on 29 school-admin sites. The breakout is below, you'll see. Twenty-four, or 40% of the actual applications had been determined not feasible by staff and turned down. So even though we have 35 on 29 school sites, 24 had been determined not feasible. There's a revenue generation of current annual revenue of about $2 million. The total revenue from '99 to 2019 has been $20 million. The overview of our basic application process, if you look at the orange ball, that's really the private sector that can approach us. We've had a number of different setups and establishments of the framework of it, but the way this Board has it set up is that any vendor representing interests can approach the division or the district with the interest of this. And this really kicks off the 2232 process and the things associated with that that are going to be gone through by the folks here to speak of today. And the new policy was, as I said, mentioned, to allow School Board members to weigh in early on. Now, I'm going to introduce Mr. Brian Bateo and also have Michelle and Brian go ahead and present their part of the presentation.
Can we change to the DPD presentation? Thank you so much. My name's Brian Bateo. I'm a planner with the Department of Planning and Development, the Planning Division in the Public Facilities Branch. Bob and Tom had asked me to come here today to give an overview of the 2232 process, which is the method by which we review monopole and communication tower applications. So I'm going to first give an overview of what 2232 is, how we go about reviewing them, what kind of guidelines we use to assess monopole applications, and then from there, discuss some recent changes in the, with the zoning ordinance and the comprehensive plan related to telecommunications facilities. So the 2232 review, I'm sure many of you are familiar with, is, it's in the Virginia State Code, and it requires that any public facilities or public utility facilities be in general accord with the location, character, and extent of what's described in the comprehensive plan. And telecommunications facilities in particular are most concerned with location and character. And for 2232 reviews, this is primarily for monopoles and communications towers, new structures, not necessarily colocations of antennas on existing structures or buildings. So to begin, we receive a 2232 application. In Fairfax County, all monopoles also require a special exception, which is related to the zoning ordinance. The 2232 is related to the guidelines that the Board of Supervisors adopted in the comprehensive plan. So we receive an application from a tower owner or a cellular carrier to build a new monopole. And if all their documenta, all the required documentation is there, then a shot clock begins. Ninety days can be extended to 150 days by the Board of Supervisors, and can be extended beyond that by mutual agreement with the applicant. We have to, the Planning Commission has to issue a decision by the end of that shot clock. Otherwise, the monopole is deemed approved. So when it comes to these applications, we have some tighter deadlines to deal with. So we receive those. If there are any other agencies that we determine need to review the monopole applications, you know, if it's located in a park or a school, you know, we'll send it to them, we'll send it to the zoning administration division, you know, anyone else that we think might need to comment on it. We give them 30 days to respond. In the meantime, we're doing our own assessment based on Board-adopted guidelines on location and character that are in the policy plan and the public facilities element of the comprehensive plan. And I'll go over just a kind of high-level overview of what those pertain to in just a moment. And we generally require a balloon fly so that, you know, neighbors can see the proposed height of the monopole. And the applicants generally do a balloon fly as well so that they can produce photo simulations of a proposed monopole. There's always going to be a required public hearing in front of the Planning Commission, and at that time, the Planning Commission will either make a decision to approve or deny or defer action on the monopole. And at that point in time, once they either approve or deny it, the 2232 process is complete. The special exception, however, will then go on to the Board of Supervisors for their decision. So as I mentioned, there's really two general areas that we look at, location and character. And these are primarily concerned with the visual impact. We aren't looking at, you know, RF maps of propagation of the radio frequencies. Been largely preempted by state and federal legislation to look at that, to look at those details. So, you know, we want to make sure that monopoles, you know, aren't any higher than what is necessary, that they're located within a pattern of existing, you know, taller structures to camouflage them, that they're hidden by topographical features or vegetation, and that, you know, they're situated appropriately in that sense. And similarly with character, you know, we see some stealth monopoles that are designed to look like other features, like a bell tower, for example, in a church. We want them to, as I said, blend in, so if they're on school properties, we want them to look similar to other taller structures nearby, like field lights and whatnot. As I mentioned, state and state legislation and FCC rulemaking has preempted a lot of our authority. So we cannot consider health impacts when evaluating monopoles, which I know there's oftentimes a lot of concern about that. Importantly, we, any local regulations cannot prohibit the provision of wireless service or have the effect of prohibiting wireless service. So that's always a balancing act that we play, that we have to deal with when evaluating monopoles. So we look at our guidelines, but we also want to make sure that whatever decision that we're recommending the Planning Commission or the Board of Supervisors takes would have the effect of prohibiting the expansion or the improvement of service that carriers require, and that's in order to comply with federal law. There are limitations on the fees that we are able to charge carriers for their applications. And I already mentioned the shot clock issue that we have to review and approve these applications under a tight deadline. And then I wanted to move on and discuss some of the recent changes to the zoning ordinance and the comprehensive plan. Particularly important to this group is that up until April of last year, the Planning, the comprehensive plan had expressed a preference for the location of monopoles on public lands. Recent changes in the state code in 2018 prevented us from having policies that prefer certain landowners, including public landowners, for the location of monopoles. So that was stricken from the comprehensive plan, from the policy plan, last April. Another important update was that, you know, as I mentioned, you know, we've mostly been talking about the construction of new structures. Previously, we would review applications for the colocation of antennas. It's the placement of antennas on existing structures. We no longer review those applications. There are still zoning ordinance requirements for those that carriers have to abide by. They have to match and blend in existing structures, they have to screen their equipment and their generators and whatnot, but we no longer review applications for those. They're deemed by right in the zoning ordinance. And that there's now a new class of structures we review called administrative review eligible projects. These are poles that are 50 feet and less than height and designed for use in small cell, with small cells. And it's expected that these will become more common as carriers begin to roll out their 5G networks. And those are administratively approved. County staff reviews those and issues a decision. Those do not go before the Planning Commission. And I guess?
Well, Brian, thank you very much, and Michelle, thank you both. As they're queuing up the next set of slides that were provided by the consultant, Mr. Schmidt's going to go ahead and speak to us about some of the talking points of the previous review of monopole leasing analysis, really how cell carriers select the sites, and then what is the need, and what School Boards could require above and beyond municipal review, and the pros and cons of doing so. And then we'll open up for your questions and comments.
Yeah. Good afternoon. My name is Ken Schmidt. I'm with Steel in the Air Incorporated. We are a consultancy that advises landowners, public and private, across the United States on cell tower leases. We've got about 4,000 clients, actually about 12,000 leases that we've procured over our database, actually 16 years in business, and then we've sold a bunch of towers for a bunch of clients. Just for point of reference, we do not do work, nor have we done any work, for Crown Castle, SBA, or Milestone Communications, who the district has leases with. Our background is, I've got about 25 years in wireless itself, and then 16 years just representing landowners all across the United States, representing everybody from individual landowners up to school districts, cities, large corporations, you name it. All right. So just starting off, I wanted to spend just a couple of minutes. I don't know what level each of you is in terms of your understanding of telecom, so I figured I might take a little bit of time to help educate and provide some information to make our talk more conducive. So first, primarily, there are two different types of sites that we're talking about, macro cells and small cells. Macro cells are the ones that you're dealing with here today. As Brian was indicating before, small cells are administratively approved, which means that any carrier can put small cells in virtually any public right-of-way with some limitations, but they are not allowed to be reviewed from a planning perspective other than for specific characteristics. So small cells, you're going to be seeing a lot more of them. You know, in terms of macro cells, there's about 325,000 of those in the United States. They've been under construction since 19, mid, you know, early 1980s. Small cells have really been starting to come on within the last couple of years. We expect that over the next couple of years, we'll get to about 800,000 to a million small cells across the United States. It'll be over a much shorter timeframe than what we've seen with macro cells, so you're going to be seeing a lot, you're going to be seeing quickly. So macro cells typically cover anywhere from half of a mile to 25 miles, depending upon height and where they're at. Small cells conversely typically cover less than a quarter mile, and some of them are effective for just a couple hundred feet, square feet. Macro cells over 50 feet, small cells are under 50 feet. You know, a macro cell costs, you know, 100,000 to 300,000 to deploy, whereas a small cell costs 15,000 to 45,000. The primary purpose, and we're talking about capacity and coverage, the primary purpose for a macro cell can be coverage or capacity. Coverage is when you actually have the ability to connect to the network. Your phone says five bars or whatnot. Capacity is the speed at which you're getting, or the ability of your phone to handle the data that's going in and out of it. Small cells are primarily for capacity. They're built to be near you, they're built to be in areas where there needs to be additional capacity. Macro cells are the broader network. We like to, we like to express it in terms of the visual of a wedding cake, that the macro cell gives a big wide area, and the small cells are the little top that gives you the capacity that's needed, like a candle or whatnot. All of this collectively forms the network. And this image, sorry, I did it on my computer, but that doesn't help you. So it forms the network. You know, you've got rooftop installations, outdoor distributed antenna systems, which are similar to small cells. Small cells, you know, indoor systems, and then towers. I think you actually have an indoor system, cellular system, in this building itself. I think one of the things that is important, that I'd like to help, you know, or throw out there, is that we get into a discussion of what is 4G versus 5G, you know, and whether or not, you know, is 5G all small cells? Is 4G just an older technology, et cetera? 4G and 5G are standards. They're just simply standards that the governing bodies put out that help to define the overall system. So when we say 4G, we simply mean the fourth generation of technologies. When we say 5G, it's the fifth generation of technologies. They both incorporate small cells, they both incorporate rooftop sites, they both incorporate indoor systems, they both incorporate towers. So 4G, you know, we, I want to make sure, and I'm happy to answer any questions after we get through this, but for our intents and purposes in discussion today, 4G and 5G are just different standards that all deal with propagation, that how the signal gets out there. So that there may be different technologies that are used under 4G or 5G, but for the most part, they are both using radio frequency energy to connect to your device. Okay. Why do carriers need sites? For coverage, as we already talked about, they want to expand, they want to get into an area where they're not currently providing service, capacity, as we spoke about. They're deploying new spectrum. Each year, you know, every two or three years, there's a new spectrum auction with the FCC where they get a new spectrum, and they need to add that different capacity, or that different capability within their network. Network optimization, you may not see it, but there are cases where they are decommissioning sites that are no longer necessary for their network. So for an example, in New York City, there were a lot of tall sites that were built on the top of buildings. Those have all been, a lot of them have been removed, and they're closer to the ground, closer to the rooftops, as the density of people and the need increases. Generally speaking, more people, more capacity, site heights start to come down, and that's why small cells are so effective in terms of meeting capacity. Changing network requirements. Sprint and T-Mobile are on the cusp of potentially merging. You know, their network requirements, that when they have both of those sets of spectrum, may change to where they need sites more frequently. And then lastly, one of the things that we are seeing a lot more of lately is they're looking to reduce the total cost of ownership. And TCO, or total cost of ownership, refers to construction costs. It's a combination of their operating expense and their capital expense when they actually deploy a site. How much do they spend to build the site? How much does it cost on an ongoing basis to operate it? Maintaining construction costs, what type of site? You know, how difficult is the permitting process? What type of civil work? You know, does the zoning requirements have the need for landscaping? Or does it need to look like a fake tree? A fake tree costs three times as much as a regular monopole-type tower. The ground lease that they have to enter into, or the colocation lease on somebody else's tower, like one that's managed or owned, you know, by the district. What's the monthly rent? What's the escalation? What's the revenue sharing? And then utilities. How difficult? Every cell site these days, especially in an urban area, has fiber, whether it's directly connected to it, whether it's brought in by microwave, everything has fiber. So to get that fiber to the site, that's also an additional cost upfront, and we'll be seeing more and more of that. And then lastly, you know, power and access, every site has to have power and access. The reason I bring up total cost of ownership is that when we start discussing need, you know, what are the carriers looking for? It's not a single variable situation. They're not saying, "We just have a need here, what's the best way of covering it, or how can we get it right here?" What they're saying is they're evaluating multiple factors simultaneously. What's the total cost of ownership? How are we getting this site? Is it easy to get to? So is it suitable? Does it meet their radio frequency standards where they need to? That may be something that marketing says, "Hey, we've got this business over here that's converting to T-Mobile service, we need a new cell tower near it." It could be that there are new, there's a new highway built, and we need to add service in that particular area. Or it could be that, in a lot of cases, what it is, is that they notice through their own engineering and their own internal trouble tickets, that they have a specific trouble area. It's available. It means that they can get it done quickly. Sometimes there are better sites, but it takes much longer to get through the process, either from zoning or otherwise. They have a willing landowner, and they have access to utilities. May not know it, but typically, one of the longer lead times in terms of getting a site, a macro cell on air, is getting the utilities brought to the site and up and running. It's permissible. I won't go into any detail on this, because obviously, these, you know, the folks from the planning have come out and spoke about that. And then lastly, you know, is it reasonable? You know, is that, is the rent and everything else going to be a factor coming down the road, and is it going to be predictable and usable in terms of the language within the agreement? All right. One of the things that I think might be helpful here is that there is a difference between need, between a carrier, the wireless carrier, like AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, Sprint, and Verizon, and the need that a company, a tower company, or an infrastructure company, like Milestone, Crown Castle, SBA Communications, Unity, et cetera, how they both focus on their own specific needs. When you're a wireless carrier, you have a specific radio frequency or marketing need that you're trying to accomplish. Every site has that need, and that's defined by the carrier at their engineering office and their marketing office. Conversely, with tower companies like a Milestone or otherwise, they are building towers to profit off of the leasing of space on those towers to the tenants. So to an AT&amp;T, to a T-Mobile, to a Verizon, to a Sprint, for the ideal world for a wireless carrier, or for a tower company, is to get four carriers on that tower. It used to be six or seven, but then a lot of mergers occurred. So depending upon who's doing the asking, the need can be different. Obviously, a tower company can't build a tower if they don't have the tenants that are willing to come to it. And the rule of thumb from the tower company's standpoint is they will not build a tower unless they have a reasonable belief that they're going to have a second wireless carrier on the tower within a five-year period. It's just not economically feasible for them to do it if they're just going to have one carrier forever. I asked earlier to confirm, but the districts, in the districts program, your average, in terms of all the towers on district property, the average is over two-something tenants per tower. So obviously, it's a fairly successful program, you know, for the district. It's been a fairly successful program, obviously, for Milestone as well. Fundamentally, nobody builds sites they don't need. They have a need to build the site. They have a need that's demonstrated at their radio frequency. These guys are not putting out, you know, 300,000 in order to build somewhere where they don't have a need. There, the other thing is that there's no shortage of pressure that each wireless carrier and tower company has in terms of building new sites. They have plenty of places they can put the money, they don't have enough money to build all of the sites that they want to. So there is a ranking hierarchy, and you'll see, you know, typically at the end of the year, the wireless carriers will go through the sites that are still in process, and they'll say, "Do we want to continue spending money on this site or not?" So there is, there is a priority, there is a need-based analysis, you know, primarily economic. That being said, need is in the eye of the beholder. And I can also say, need is on the basis of the presenter, that the presenter, you know, the tower company or the wireless carrier can create need and show you whatever need they need to show you in order to get approval. So this primarily happens because the carriers have the data. So the county is not allowed to look at the radio frequency, you know, they don't review the radio frequency data as part of the code. So the carriers, in terms of being able to document need or submit for need, can put together what they need to from their own staff, regardless of where they, of what need they want to demonstrate. I was previously a, one of the people that came in front of the boards, you know, and proposed towers, and there wasn't, it was very difficult for me to find a situation where I couldn't present the need-based documents and scientific proof necessary to show what I wanted to show. So the need can be demonstrated fairly easy. I can put together documentation, or the radio frequency department can put together exactly what it is that we want to show. They have the data, they have the ability to demonstrate. I think that if you come across, you know, if you come apart from this with one thing, it's that there are many factors that contribute to that. So we know that there's a need for a tower everywhere. We know that, you know, when they are proposing a tower, they have a need there, they define that need. You know, if you were to ask me, "Is that always the best spot?", it's not. It's not always the best spot, it's the optimal spot that... It's not always the best spot, it's the optimal spot that meets all of their objectives internally, some of which are not related to radio frequency coverage or capacity. So, speaking to the direct question of whether or not it's, you know, it makes sense to retain an outside expert to assist the board with the termination of need or other factors related to proposed monopoles on district property, I've created a list of four pros to doing it and then four cons as well, to help you evaluate. First, the county, as they were discussing earlier, has their hands tied by state statutes and federal statutes. So the district has the ability, and I don't want to advise you legally, but the district has the ability, as a proprietary landowner, acting its proprietary function as a landowner, to decide whether or not to require higher standards than what the county may require for its own sites. Secondly, it helps to create a uniform expectation by having an expert that's unit, that's reviewing everything under the same standards and then providing the same analysis that the board can review, as opposed to an outside third party or a tower company or an interested party such as a tower company. An expert can also provide flexibility to you in terms of dealing with situations that may be more thorny. It provides you some insulation from that decision, because you can point to the expert's report, and that's the external validation of the process, that the expert can come in, help set up the process, and then demonstrate, go through it, and then help, you know, make sure that it meets your requirements. Just to be clear, I don't provide these services, so I'm not pitching you on anything, I'm just here to help, you know, illuminate this. The cons of retaining an outside expert. One, it's very difficult to verify what a carrier states without having access to the same data. If I, as an expert, you know, as I for somebody for the carrier, can demonstrate whatever I want to, it's up to you to have to be able to have an expert that's capable of going through it. There are a lot of experts that actually can do that. It's depends on how much data, though, they're getting back from the carrier, and how much the carriers are interested in going forward with that particular site. At what point does the barrier or the total cost of ownership become so much that they just choose to go somewhere else? In my history, there are people that will never be satisfied with an expert report. Maybe it's just because I'm not that good of an expert, I don't know, but there are people that are not going to be satisfied, no matter what you put in front of them. It's costly. So the, you know, to do a standard, so let's just say you wanted to evaluate need or have a full analysis done, you're looking at likely somewhere between 2,500 to 7,500 for each particular application that was put in front of you. And then lastly, the unintended consequences of having further review done, and this is certainly something from the school board's decision they can, you know, they can make or look into further, but there are unintended consequences of denying monopoles with on school district properties. One of the things that I think that, you know, that the code previously did, we started reviewing the district property school sites back in 2008, when we were looking at the, you know, at whether or not the leasing program was an effective one for the district, and we found that it was. One of the things, though, that the, the program does is, you know, in terms of encouraging, one of the goals was to, you know, to reduce the digital divide that is out there. Whether or not the school district was providing equipment on those, that's one of the things that we were recommending in terms of the ability to make sure that the leases allowed you to do it, if you so chose to, wanted to add equipment to these towers at some point in the future. And then secondly, whether or not coverage in general, whether you're using AT&amp;T, you know, Verizon, et cetera, was expanding. So those things are some of the goals of the program. There can also be, by pushing sites off or denying sites on school district properties, what you find is that in many areas, your school district or the school property is the largest property and it's surrounded by residential. Those are probably, you know, not coincidentally, also probably the most contentious ones, you know, that come up, because parents can be upset about the placement of wireless services on a school district property. Sometimes, school district property is the optimal location, you know, for a cell tower facility, just given the size, whether maybe it's a park site, maybe it's the school district site, you know, those can be the appropriate locations. One of the things, though, that can happen, this is a graphic that shows, you know, the placement of small cells. So if we, you know, if, from the standpoint of replacing a small cell, or replacing a macro cell, if I deny, if I could not build the macro cell within a particular area, and I'm AT&amp;T, my next response is to build 20 to 30 small cells. That's the, that's what would cover that same area. So the unintended consequence of denying a macro cell could be that it goes to another property and you're faced with the same issues. I think these gentlemen were sharing earlier, that in one of your school district sites, you know, you denied it, but it ended up being right across the street anyway on a utility structure. You know, the alternative could also be that by denying some of these that may be better suited on school district property, that there would be a significant number of new small cells that would pop up in that same neighborhood. Again, that may not be the school, the school board's purview, you know, that they want to get into deciding where sites should go or not, that's the planning staff to a certain extent, you know, but that could be an unintended consequence. So I just did have some, you know, which, if you do choose to go forward with recommend, or with an expert, I did have some recommendations. One of the things that we did the first time that we started with the district was we sat down and went through an exercise of trying to figure out what were the school district's goals regarding the monopole program? And then we went through a force ranking to where we figured out, this is the most important goal, this is the next most important, et cetera. The same thing is necessary here. The school board, it's not just a simple saying, "We need an expert to tell us what we need or don't need." It's the school board sitting down and saying, "What are our priorities?" Your program lists objectives, but it doesn't rank them. It's not a comparative ranking, it's just a elaborative or a listing. The objectives that you do have may not be specific enough based on what the board's goals might have. If you did move forward with an expert, there would be a need to create an application for each of the applicants that was proposing a site to the school board, and it may require more additional information besides what is currently put into the applications that you receive. Again, that should be tailored to the goals that you have. It doesn't need to duplicate the information in the planning, but it could be augmenting. And again, you have the ability, likely, and your attorneys can advise you, but you have the ability to act in a stricter fashion as a proprietary landowner, as opposed to someone that is, or to the county in their review process. I would suggest requiring demonstration of need from multiple providers, not just the one that's coming in. So AT&amp;T may have an interest in a particular school district, but it may behoove you to make sure that Verizon or T-Mobile or Sprint is also active and interested as well, before allowing a single carrier tower to be placed on your school district properties. And then if you retain an expert, have them create, you know, create, one of their first steps should be to create a clear policy of review. What are they reviewing? How are they reviewing it? How are they reporting it? What is it that you want them to review or not review? And then, I would recommend against reviewing health concerns. The FCC has conclusively, on its end, determined that radio frequency, had just recently reaffirmed that they see no issues with it. I'm not here to quote, you know, to suggest whether the FCC, you know, policy is correct or not. I think, though, that from a school board's standpoint, you start getting into that evaluation, and you're opening up a whole can of worms, regardless of whether you have an expert or not. You would be safer, I think, to just categorically deny sites, you know, and say, "We're not interested in anymore," or to allow them across the district without a separate, you know, review of the health concerns related to them. And that is it.
Well, thank you very much, Ken, and I do appreciate Brian, Michelle, all of you being with us here today. And really, it comes down to our, that concludes our formal presentation, but it really comes down to the staff's recommendation, really just couples with what was just stated. You know, we, we do have a pretty robust program that's been around for quite some time. We don't recommend an expert be in, in contract or engaged at this point, based upon the county land use process and the staff's process, and the school board just reevaluating the school board policy and so on. But certainly, in this matter, we're definitely, as we would in any case, up to the board's purview. So with that, we're open for any questions you may have at this time. And I'd like to also acknowledge, though, that, you know, Ms. Keeley, tomorrow, we recognize your formal work on the planning commission, you're well-versed in the 2232 process.
Okay, thank you. We have Megan on board, we have a schedule to end at 4:30, I don't think we're going to make that, so why don't we try to wrap up our questions around 4:30 and then do next steps, because we were running a little bit behind, but we'll see how that works. Ms. McLaughlin?
Thank you. To my newer colleagues, I served on the Governance Committee for about six years and was very involved in the cell tower policy review, and one of the things that the Governance Committee had brought in was a request that we bring in, as part of the board's practice on a going-forward basis, a third-party expert. One of the companies that was brought to our attention is an independent expert that works with over 500 municipalities, local governments, and also the National Park Service. And the goal here was simply to say that in one of the application cases that we had, that was brought to the board's attention, the community was concerned about the placement, not just that a tower would be put on one of our elementary school properties, but that it was also going to be where exactly in proximity to a playground on the school property. And the community kept asking why, right next door, where there was parkland, fair fact, same parkland, that wasn't being considered. And so I just want you all to know that I learned a lot during that Governance Committee work, and one of the things that I found very compelling is not only that, there is a third-party expert that has no ties to the, not just the telephone company, or the telecom companies, but also to the tower companies that, that bring those structures. So I, I do strongly support the value of having a third-party expert. I do think that the board should be looking at this one organization that I just mentioned that has a longstanding record of doing work in this field. And it's, it was, again, concerning to me that even from a public trust standpoint, many school divisions, certainly even in this area alone, have demonstrated that when you look at the small footprint of an elementary school campus, that makes it really less appealing as a standard. And so I'm definitely not a telecom expert on this stuff, but I do think that we have an ability to look at, how do we show responsibility in our role? Before, before the board's most recent work on this, the school board didn't even have any oversight at all about the actual placement of these. And so I, I want to thank Mr. Plattenberg and your team, and I, I really appreciate you coming out here, stealing the air, and that you're coming with an independent voice to this, but I, I just want you all to know, I think this is an important step, to have the expert.
Ms. Corbett Sanders, and could you possibly talk about where the board is, because we have a policy with respect to elementary schools right now?
Yes, I was actually going to mention that. We do have a policy that actually urges against the use of, the placement of cell towers on our elementary school grounds. So really, what we're talking about is secondary schools, high schools. And I was very glad that you showed the two, the charts with the difference between towers versus small cell. Because, and for those of you, I'm careful in saying this, but I did spend the bulk of my professional career in telecoms. And one of the concerns that I have is that there's a lot of fear, but it's not necessarily substantiated fear about the health effects. But in particular, cell towers, which place the cell site 50 feet or more up in the air, would be preferable to having one of our schools surrounded by a bunch of small cells that could, when you added them in aggregate, actually exceed the electromagnetic effects of what is being distributed at 50 feet up in the air and typically known for its line of sight. And so, from our perspective, I think that there are lots of checks and balances today in how municipalities address cell sites, and their location and the authorization of them, and with limited funding, I don't see a need to hire an external wireless consultant, because you probably have seen more here. But I do think that we should adhere to the initial, the policy decisions of a year ago, which is, let's keep them off of elementary school grounds because of the size of the footprint, and let's put them through the traditional approach to approving them for other locations. But I would not be in support of seeing as, frankly, create a cottage industry around
I was thinking. Ms. Marin?
Hi, thank you. I have a few questions for, for staff and for Mr., perhaps Mr. Schmidt. So why, how did it come about that we were even considering having a third-party evaluate this work?
It initially came out, I know when governance went ahead and started the discussion, we had many meetings, and I think it was not only advocates that said, "Hey, look, you know, you, you don't even have people on the external take a look at what it is that you're doing." We contacted the individual, the specific vendor that was named, and in our conversations with that vendor, they articulated that they're brought in where people in small, like, areas or areas that don't have a 2232 process. And the individual said that they hadn't worked with schools in the past. But the point being, having, as Ms. McLaughlin mentioned, and also some of these conversations, having a third-party, you know, and the pros and cons that you heard from Mr. Schmidt, will provide, or provides, in some cases, people's feeling that you have at least somebody who's independent of the process. We are independent of the process, but we're, we're the one, you know, representing the owner, right, the school board, so it's not viewed as if we're independent. And then the vendor who approaches the school system is certainly not independent. So I think it was out of that conversation, and perhaps Ms. McLaughlin could add to it, but I think it came out as a part of that governance conversation, as another good crosspoint or check, internal control.
Okay. Can you tell me a little bit about the money? Does the money from the, where, does the income we get, the revenue we get from where the tower is, does that go to that specific school, or does that get distributed across the system?
Yes, ma'am. My name's Bob Cordova, I'm coordinator for property management. The revenue share is, the school system gets typically 45% of the gross rental rate. A gross rental rate might be about $2,800 a month. Of the 45% that the school system gets, the hosting school gets 15% of that. Now, they get recurring funds and one-time funds. A poll coming to a new school for the first time gets a one-time fee of $25,000 for the poll and the first carrier to that poll. Thereafter, as, as you heard in the presentations, where you can have two or three carriers, any additional carrier is another one-time fee of $5,000 for that hosting school. And then, like I said, the hosting school gets 15% of the FCPS rental. What that means for them typically, on average, per carrier, is maybe $10,000 a year.
So...
I'd like to add one piece to that. The central office funding that comes to us is what funds our MiFi program for kids that don't have internet at home.
Thank you. So, you know, I've heard from a lot of constituents in my area, very passionate about how they So, you know, I've heard from a lot of constituents in my area, very passionate about how they feel about this. And one thing I'm not so clear about is the process by which the school board gets the opportunity to review what goes forward, not in our body, but over to the Planning Commission. So I think, for instance, there's on the docket this Wednesday for the Planning Commission Herndon High School, the application for a tower. And so my understanding is that we have to review that first before it goes forward. And I just want to confirm that and get clarity. And I'm not sure that it's happened in that case, and so I just figured, I just want to get clarity on that.
Yeah, so the process in accordance with the school board policy is really that the school board has communication, right? The opportunity for people to articulate their position, their opinions, and their thoughts on the matter. Regarding that application, that application isn't this next Wednesday. It has been deferred to the end of the month for the Planning Commission, I think the 26th, 26th.
Okay, thanks for correcting me. Okay, all right, I'll reserve my time perhaps for later. Thanks.
We have Ms. Dr. Anderson.
Can you share what the cost of retaining the third-party consultation will be to the district?
Yeah, Mr. Schmidt had said 2,500 to 7,500 per site. I believe that's the quote that I, that's the first time I've heard that, so.
Okay, that was my only...
Yeah, there would likely be an upfront cost to, to help them with the policy, you know, reviewing the policy, but on an ongoing basis, applications typically run 2,500, 7,500 to review. And there are multiple experts out there who could, who would respond to a quote, I'm sure.
Dr. Anderson, are you finished?
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right, thank you. Mr. Fritsch?
All right. So we currently have a ban on elementary schools because of their footprint. Is that...
It's not a ban.
Okay, we don't, we don't locate things because of the footprint, a policy, whatever it is. We currently don't place them there because of their footprint supposedly. And I say supposedly because it seems like a rather arbitrary thing to say that all, okay, all elementary schools are not suited to the footprint. What seems more likely to me is that we are talking about, both sides of our mouths, about the safety of these towers, that they're perfectly safe for high schools and middle schools, and because parents are more active at the elementary school level, maybe we don't want that argument to be had. So we have a practice or a policy or a standard way of operating that we're not locating at elementary schools carte blanche, as opposed to, on a case-by-case basis. Can somebody speak to that?
Well, I can, first of all, and Mr. Fritsch, that's not the point. The point of it is that the school board and their policy said, to, the board states in D., page 2, policy 8335.4, the board states a preference that wireless communication facilities should not be placed on an elementary school property. The safety issue that you mentioned, and this is where, in the presentation, you heard the broader lines...
About the height?
Well, period about safety. The reality is, and nobody has proven, and that's why the two sides are so passionate. We have had other issues with electrical power distribution centers and their location with schools, and the opinions of people about the potential for safety or not safety. One of the positions that has been taken in the past is that when the Board of Supervisors included in the comprehensive plan, the expansion of wireless service as a part of the community growth and development, when that was viewed at, it was looked at as there were no health or safety issues. I personally take my direction from the Health Director of Fairfax County. We haven't gotten, received any information regarding the safety of these elements either way, whether they're small cell or towers. So again, but I'm not a safety expert, I'm not an engineer. We've received a lot of input from advocates that were quite vocal on the safety issue. And the safety issue from the advocates, the majority of the documentation had to do with the use of the individual unit, that people would hold up to their head for long periods of time, et cetera. However, that was a lot of the conversation in, Mr. Fritsch, and a lot of the stuff that we have read and been provided. But again, so it was determined in that whole conversation, I think Ms. McLaughlin referred to it, about the location on an individual site where there was an adjacent site that would adequately meet the needs, that the determination was, the juice wasn't worth the squeeze on that elementary school. And then the determination was, looking further, well, let's just go ahead and keep them away from elementary schools and the elementary school playgrounds and so forth, and look at just middle schools. It does allow, the policy does allow, if there's a compelling need, an individual can bring it forward for consideration at an elementary school. I hope that provides some clarity.
It does. My second question would be, roughly speaking, if after the $25,000 locating fee is paid to the school and they're getting 15%, is that right? 15%? What on average is that to the school each year?
About $10,000.
About $10,000 per carrier.
So on the high end? How many carriers is like the...
Maybe, you can have up to five, can't you?
The $40,000 to $50,000 on the high end? What's the average number of carriers that any one of our towers have?
10,000 per school is what they said. We can provide you with that detail. I mean, it's a math equation, and we have how much some of the schools have received in the past, so.
A school like Westgate Elementary School gets about 16,000 for the year. A school like South Lakes where there's two towers that we happen to own, so the percentage is different, gets maybe closer to 25,000 plus. But the average, if you take the total income, we're about to do a disbursement later this month, we do it twice a year, it'll be $150,000 sent out to the 29 sites. That's roughly about, we had the numbers, I think 5,000 for the six months, 10,000 annually for the year. But that 10,000, some schools, because they have multiple sites and more carriers, they receive a greater income.
In addition, there is, as Ms. Loveglass mentioned, the fees, the difference of the fees also pay for those MiFi's that go on there. And we also pay for some of our security telecommunication equipment out of that, out of the other fees that we receive.
All right. I'll just posit, it might be easier for schools, schools to swallow if, or school communities to swallow if they were getting more bang for their buck out of, out of the program. But I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Ms. Dernick Kofax?
Yes, and sorry if this has already been brought to your attention, but, because I had to step out for a moment. The policy that the board reviewed, that had extensive board review. We, we had it in governance, it came back out into the full board two, maybe three times. So there was an extensive policy review, and the language was very carefully crafted, basically saying that the school board has the right and reserves the right to approve or disapprove any application at any time prior to that. So that, you know, left us out, whatever, you know, it gave us the out if the board ever wanted to do that. At the time, we believed that the, the financial support to our school was important. And again, as Mr. Plattenberg spoke of, that there was no extensive, you know, it's a passionate argument on both sides. Do you believe there's health risks, do you not? Do you believe it's more health risk, like he said, to put this up to your, than that cell tower that sits? But because there was lengthy discussion on this. So I just want to assure new board members that this wasn't done in a flippant, haphazard manner. It was done with great fidelity, lots of conversation between governance and the new board.
Ms. Sizmore Heiser?
Oh, is she out? Okay, we'll come back to her. We're at go-back, so Ms. Tolan, did you want to have a comment?
So I was hoping that, just for the sake, maybe of some of the new people on the board, could you just walk us through the decision-making process, and since Herndon is going to be going to the Planning Commission at the end of this month, like, what were the discussions that happened around, you know, the installation at Herndon High School?
Absolutely, yeah. So the Herndon application started some time ago, where we were approached by the individual vendor regarding the prospect for installing a monopole at the, at the high school, on the high school site. The prior board that was here, in that conversation, the school board member representing that district and the board supervisor member were both aware of it and in conversations and in support of the direction moving forward. That being said, the process was concurrent with the timing on the 18, the 2018 update, the December 2018 update. That's how long ago that initially started. And since we were dealing with that process, we didn't pursue going forward until we had the school board policy, because we didn't want to have anything in conflict with the processes associated with that. And I'm making sure, my colleagues here, make sure I'm correct on everything, because I'm going off my memory. But then the next thing that happened with that is that, because there was another election, because we had this work session that had been trying to be scheduled for quite some time, and then the election, we decided, okay, well, we're going to go ahead and wait and see how this goes, because we have a new policy, we have new board members, we want to educate and articulate the process associated with this overarching program that we've had for quite some time. Even though we feel this is one of the, probably the last monopoles that might be coming in here, because the direction that you heard from the expert consultant is that the direction is into those smaller microcell distributions. And we feel our market space is pretty much saturated on most of our sites. We thought it important to go ahead and, and have that timing concurrent with this conversation and this work session. That being said, the process, the actual vendor themselves sends notification to folks around the adjacent property owners, and I believe there were close to 700 notifications that were sent out. And then in addition, we have the school principal go ahead and send a notification through their news you can choose to parents who sign up to receive that, that are parents of students in the school. That information is notification, and somebody had mentioned to me this evening, who came here to speak, had said, or to watch this, said that that, you know, they felt that that was embedded in the news you can choose, but that's how the information is articulated. And that went out to some 3,400 individual people that was distributed to, notifying them that there's a meeting that's being held. In that meeting, our staff is there as representatives on your behalf, and the vendor goes ahead and talks about what they're going to do and the balloon height and the cell tower and so forth. In addition, there's an opportunity for people to go ahead and provide feedback, but that's on the, I believe, the vendor's website, not the school system's website, regarding the placement or the idea of the cell tower. Then what usually happens, in accordance with your policy, if there's no opposition, no desire by this body to go ahead and pull it, to have further discussion, staff is authorized, in accordance with the policy, I mean, the superintendent is designated, to go ahead and move forward with the, the process and the relevant, either PCEs or whatever, that are associated with the individual application, which then kicks off the timing with the zoning folks and the 2232 process. So therefore, those hearings that do take place. I do believe, from what I've heard, that that's a pretty aggressive and pretty broad-based approach to notifying people, and it's more than what's done with most things, from what I understand. But I've got the experts here to address that, but that's generally an overarching summary. Is there anything you wanted to add, Bob or Tom, that I might have left out in the process?
No, you go.
Really? Wow.
So this, I know is purely conjecture, but if we didn't put this, like, we were talking earlier, this macro cell at Herndon, given the growth of population, et cetera, in Herndon, would you expect that we would be seeing up a lot of these smaller towers?
Yes, you're going to see, you're going to see a lot of them either way. There would be a greater quantity, though, that would be deployed without the macro cell being deployed. Yes.
One, one comment about the small cells. We've already had three applications or inquiries, one to put one at Luther Jackson because of the proximity of the restaurants and everything there. One, that was going to be on our property, so we easily denied that. We didn't want to run Eastman through the parking lot, et cetera. One at Carson Middle School, directly in front of the entrance, in front of our marquee. We worked with the applicant, I've forgotten whether it was Sprint or T-Mobile, there were other options. When it comes to the right-of-way, they can, they can place it there. We cannot really control that, but we were able to sort of shame them and get them to look at the other side of the street and putting it down further. And then a few months ago at Lake Anne Elementary School, they wanted to place one right in front of the school. It was AT&amp;T again, and we asked them if they couldn't please find another location, and they did. So we've been able to deflect some of those, but that's not going to work in every case.
And that's why we mentioned early on, of the 35 poles, we've had 24 that we've, you know, said basically what Tom just shared with you, some perfect examples of it. So we are discerning in our processes, is I guess the best way to summarize it.
Thank you. We only have go-backs left besides myself, so I will go, I think, I was going to ask you about that, and that is the cottage effect. It does sound like, because of developments in this industry, even if we say no, they will be, they will have a presence in the community, which could arguably be of greater concern for the community that we're hearing from. I mean, they, so that's part of it. And then in my meeting, you explained that you had done measurements of the waves that come from this type of instrument. And can you explain that a little bit as to when it was strong and when it wasn't?
Annually, we do RF emissions testing. When I say we do it, that's contracted out to a testing expert, Waterford Consultants out of Leesburg. We do it over spring break when the schools are empty, and we measure about, they measure about 40 different sites, inside the building, outside the building, next to the tower, in the parking lots. And I'm not an RF expert, Ken may be able to speak a little bit more to this, but the exposure is measured in something they call MPE, Maximum Permissible Exposure. Of course, it's set at 100%. All of our sites test at about less than 1%, some of them at maybe 2% or so, but that's out of 100%. So we're way below the FCC limits. And you would think that at some of the sites, Herndon High School does not have a tower yet, but we tested it, the site anyways, we wanted to do before and after, and the RF emissions in that area, because of background stuff, whether it's TV, radio, other RF emissions, yeah, it tests in the middle of the pack of our other schools. And when we tested Chantilly High School, we tested during spring break, and then the Governance Committee, I think, one of the parents suggested, let's test it at 3:15 on a school day and see what happens. We would all expect it to be higher at 3:15 on a school day. Quite the opposite occurred. Our lowest reading was at 3:15 on a school day, our highest reading was during spring break. So background is something you cannot factor out. It's, it's going to be prevalent by lots of other emission sources.
Yeah, I just wanted to add to that, that from the testing procedure, this is far more extensive than what the industry does itself. So the, the typical tests are done within a certain radius of the site, and, you know, they may be walk around the roof, they may go down, you know, at the base level. To do this, many measurements is uncommon.
So...
And to do it annually.
Okay, so as part of our review, would it be reasonable for us to ask for those types of measurements and a regular report to the board to make sure that we are within what would be considered healthy?
Yeah, we have all those for at least the last five years or so on SharePoint from every site. They're extensive documents, each one is about 40 to 45 pages.
But we can make some sense of it and have a summary.
So I'm wondering, perhaps as a next step, because we do have such an active community, whether we want to make that information available to the public. Now, Ms. Loveglass mentioned that there were funds coming from what we get from these cell towers to assist with our Wi-Fi costs. Do you have any numbers on that?
The MiFi, the mobile, the mobile Wi-Fi that we give to the kids in poverty.
Okay, do you have any numbers on what we're getting from that?
It's approximately $250,000 a year.
Okay.
And the school safety radios are approximately $355,000. So we not only fund the MiFi's, we fund the school safety radios out of it as well.
Okay, all right. And I know you said you were giving us some numbers with respect to what specific schools were getting money. Is there any way we could get a more complete list as a next step? If, yeah, okay. And do we have any information on how other school districts are handling this issue? Stop my tone.
Sure, I'd be happy to talk about it. So looking at it from two perspectives. So from the leasing standpoint, there are many other school So from the leasing standpoint, there are many other school districts that actually do leasing. I do want to point out that the program here in Fairfax, in terms of overall revenue generated, is within the top 5% in the country, probably the top 2% or 3%, if not. From a radio frequency standpoint, they're all over. It really is all over. I mean, it depends upon, you know, how organized the parents are in opposition, it depends on, you know, the need for revenue, et cetera. We see a significant, though, I think I will share, that we see in just reviewing, I've been reviewing Google Alerts for cell tower related things, and I have to say that by far, at no point in history had there ever been more, you know, has it ever been more contentious than it is right now. So there is just, there's no question that there is a lot more concern.
True. Contentious is fairly abundant. Is there a way that we could come up with guidelines for our cells? I'm really hesitant to paying somebody outside. That's money going out of our coffers. But if we could give the community assurances through our measurements and a plan perhaps to provide that, is there a way that we could, the board could perhaps review a, some recommendations where we could have that information routinely available to the community?
Yeah, we could take that as an extension of your previous next step recommendations. We'll come up with a general way to have reporting out some of that.
Okay, Dr. Braybran?
I want to say, I think the nugget that you're trying to share, Ms. Keys-Gamar, is we've gone over and above to do the safety checks, to do the RF checks, and we need to show the community our work.
Right.
Because some folks in our community are concerned, and they need to know what we're doing, and we do take it seriously, and we have work behind it. And I think the show your work is a theme that, as I've spent more time here, no, but I mean, honestly, and I even learned, I didn't know all of this when I stepped into the superintendent role, even though I was on leadership team, I was a principal of a high school that received a monopole. And I know for the school officials to have the opportunity to have those additional dollars is a major impact. But we need to acknowledge, there's more contention about it, there's more concern about the effects of RF, and we need to put the information out there for transparency sake, and the board has a policy decision to make. And so we recognize that, and we'll be glad to follow up and start to put that information out regularly, and the Braybran briefing, I think, will probably be the appropriate place.
So I have two final comments with my 48, nine seconds. One, if we could have a, just an overview as part of a next step, so that that also is something the community can see, is how other jurisdictions are handling this. Where do we, where do we fall? Other large jurisdictions, how are they handling this particular issue? And then if we could also talk a little bit about a communications plan, Dr. Braybran, as you pointed out, the community does not know, and when we leave a vacuum of information, we beg for spokespeople who may be less informed. So perhaps we need to think about, A, what is the communication we can share with the community, and then how best to communicate that information.
Sure. Excuse me, Ms. Keys-Gamar, may I ask for clarification? I think, I think what information and how to communicate are the two elements, but when you said about these issues and other jurisdictions, I was trying to figure out.
In terms of how they're handling, what do we call in this?
The 2232 process equivalent?
When, when, when they are requested to have, yeah, when, how, when they're, are they being requested to have these cell towers? And how are they, what is their procedures?
What are their policies? What are their regulations? Are they more or less, does some districts ban, there are a couple districts that ban all use of monopoles, that's what she's talking about.
Yes, absolutely, and I can tell you, it's all over the map, but we'll be happy to go ahead and provide some comparators.
I think that would help us to make a decision. Okay, Ms. Sizemore, how, help me. You see why I'm trying to get you to turn it toward me? Okay.
So you actually asked most of the questions I was going to ask in terms around a communication plan, where we sort of show our work is a good way of putting it. I just wanted to add to that, as part of sort of what we communicate out to our community, one, is there, I'm assuming there is, do you all have documented what your policies are, what your steps you go through when you've been receiving an application, and kind of what, you know, here's what we test, here's what we do, here's the timeline? That would be, and especially the piece where, where we can receive input from the public, or how long, how long they have, you know, before we send out the news you choose, or whatever notification to the public to comment to either us, the process by which they can comment, like if it goes to the planning commission, what does that look like? I think that would be helpful, too, to have part of that sort of show your work, is here's how the public can be engaged with this, so they feel like there's a systematic way just to give comment around, you know, something that might affect their school. That's the only thing I might add to what you're saying.
So I think you may have been in the back, Rachna, when we talked a little bit about how there's notice, and how the notice, the public has, the public receives notice of this consideration, and then we, they, we have a public, a period in which they can give comment, but they, certainly we can outline it, but I just wanted to mention, you were in the back when we talked about that.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. I meant more in terms of like documenting your process you go through, as well as the process of, you know, the planning commission, this and that, so it's sort of clear what the steps are, in addition to where the comments, but thank you, I appreciate that.
And Mr. Blumberg, it may be the case, we have, we have a clear public engagement process, we may need to make it clear to the public what the public engagement process is. I think that's what I hear you saying.
That's what I'm saying, yeah, it's like, you know.
Right, we have one, but do people know it? Is it readily available to know where to go to understand what that looks like?
As part of what Ms. Keys-Gamar was saying, was developing a communications plan to share out, you know, and we have it, but part of sharing it out is telling people, this is what it is, here's where you can go, so we're not getting sort of, I feel like sometimes we get panicked emails from families saying, oh, my gosh, I saw this on your agenda, I want to stop, 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 you know, and I think if we had a more proactive communications where they know where to come, that we wouldn't get those panicked emails as much as what I feel like.
Ms. Sizemore, you raise an excellent point, and that's some of the feedback I received from somebody who was talking to me earlier this evening, was that kind of reaction. And I can, I can tell you that with just about everything, when it comes up to a vote, some people feel like they didn't have any way to be involved in a process whatsoever. It's been mentioned about the boundary process, and some of the comments that was made previously by Ms. Amish about, you know, people's concerns and how we can better articulate and communicate that. We're always looking for improvement processes. We did, through the governance process, go through our step-by-step communication, but I can assure you, there's still people who feel that they don't have an opportunity. And when I mentioned that reach out to your board members and send emails, because I usually get the communications from you that you receive regarding my areas, you know, there's, there's just a level of fidelity that people want to know what else they can do. So I think with what Dr. Braybran said, we can look around that.
Okay, we are just a little bit past 4:30, and we have a few go-backs, and so we should think about what your next steps were, if you have any. And we have Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Thank you. Before an elementary school can be considered as a possible location, our policy requires the board member from that area to request a review by the full board on the location of something located there. And if I remember correctly, the conversation about why there were concerns on elementary school lands, it was really about the size, the footprint of the school, and concerns by parents that in cases of ice storms or snow, that they could fall, you know, ice could fall on kids and things like that. And that's really what the, what the concerns that were raised at that point are. Additionally, I would suggest that we are spending a lot of time on our own staff, takes a lot of time and effort in the review of any of these applications, and I would suggest that they are probably more thoughtful and have expended more than $7,500 in their own professional time in the review of any of these applications. And so going to an outside source is somewhat redundant, and it is not likely to have the same level of fidelity and detail based on the reports that we already take for these. And then my last statement would be, just from a safety and security point of view, cell towers are needed for connectivity and communications. And in my area of the county where, because it's a historic parkway, and so they're not allowed to put anything on the parkway, having cell towers on school grounds or in commercial locations is really necessary just to be able to provide the connectivity of communications. And I, for one, want my children to be able to have a phone in the car if they're driving someplace and they need to get in touch with me. Not while they're driving, though.
Hands free. Okay, Ms. McLaughlin?
Well, I'm glad I'm going after Ms. Corbett Sanders, because this is a reason why even the public gets concerned about what we are doing here, and who's, who's to know what's the right thing to be done here. I, I don't know why this has to be an all or nothing. I think that, again, if you read up on, on the Center for Municipal Services, that is the one that works with National Park Service and also with, I think it's 500 to 1,000 different localities, they're, they are independent. So when you're talking about an optics issue, the community came to many of us working on the governance committee and said, you have one cell tower company that has done all the applications for Fairfax County. And that one cell tower company that makes all the applications also serves on our foundation board, and also it serves as co-chair of the bond committee. So we're faced with the challenge of people saying there's an optics issue here. For the sake of that company that has been the sole applicant to us, because they're just, I don't know, there aren't any other people in the space, it would actually be beneficial, I would think, for that company, because there isn't people in that space, that on an as-needed basis, like the, the elementary school where we had the concern about its location and its proximity to the playground, and the safety concerns that the families had, and that the parkland was right next door. And what we were also told is that the park authority, we could certainly have in our policy that says we, we, as it has a preference, that cell towers are not to be on Fairfax County school properties, so the default is that applicants would go to the park authority first. Right now, the way we have this set up, we're not the default, we're sometimes the primary source. And something that, that Ms. Corbett Sanders said is really important when you're talking about connectivity, that was, again, the push-pull we were getting. The applicant is saying, hey, you need this connectivity for 911 calls and the whole thing, and then you've got people in the community saying, that's actually not true. And rather than staff gets pulled in, the school board's sitting in the middle, the community's on the other end, if you get a third-party person who comes in and says, we've done the independent review, it's, again, I don't know how they're quoting the fees, but I just look at it as, on an as-needed basis, when we find ourselves in these things, why wouldn't the board want to have something that I think benefits everybody in a win-win for, for not just saying, thank you, but we have a really robust process? Well, some people have taken issue with that, so being able to show an expert that's used nationwide, to me, is the way that we get out of everybody pointing fingers, everybody saying, well, this, this, this person's, you know, got a good relationship with that person. I just think it's a, when needed, when it's in question, and especially in the connectivity piece that Ms. Corbett Sanders said, why not have somebody come in and give the analysis to the board? Because we hold the ultimate decision in this thing.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Yep.
Thank you. Ms., Dr. Anderson, did you still want to make a comment?
Yes, I actually had a question and a, and a comment. And speaking regarding the locations at the sites, we did notice that there's one at the elementary school. How is it determined where the towers are placed? Is it that we provide the specific location, once we've approved the application for that site, or is it that they said this is optimal and that's it? How's that determined?
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Anderson. Yeah, the approach is, they make a recommendation, the carrier approaches us and says, this is their approximate location. But then we take a look at it, we do what we, what we say is our internal controls to make sure that, A, it's in conformance of where we might be needing that space in the future, the location proximity on the site, are we going to do build any additions in the future? If we were to build any additions, where would that go, to make sure there's no clash? And I think you wanted to mention something else about what we also look at.
Well, and I think Ken mentioned this, wherever the site is, you need to be able to get utilities to it without a great deal of difficulty, and you'd like somewhat easy access, a hardtop surface or something, you put something in the middle of a school site, and, because you do have to occasionally visit these with a small truck. We make some exceptions when we do the initial installation for the construction and stuff, and we can always fix that up, but there is routine maintenance that occurs, so it has to be accessible. Absolutely, absolutely. We, we look at, you know, if there are options, look at which options, options might be best. In the case of Westgate Elementary School, that was one of the earlier ones, that was put in over 20 years ago, I believe, in 2000, because of the need in the Tysons area, and it's really at the backside. Westgate Elementary is a fairly large campus for an elementary school.
And the park authority property in the back provided access to, if I recall correctly on that.
Correct.
So it was kind of a unique situation now.
And my second piece, Ms. Keys-Gamar had shared a little bit in terms of a next step, is to give some information regarding some of the school districts, that, large school districts that may have policies in place that say no, that they won't allow monopoles at all at their schools. I would love to have any information that you could call with those schools that have banned it altogether, what has been some of the unintended results that you've talked about? Do they see an increase in those small cells? Just a little bit of connecting the dots there for me.
I don't know that we could do that, but we can certainly try to gain some information as to what that opportunity may be, without engaging somebody else. I don't know if we could, we would be able to collect how much small cell expansion or what may be, but we can certainly try.
Can I just add to that? It may be too early. The, the push for small cells has really been the last two years, and out of them, you know, half of them have been deployed in the last year. So it may be too early, you know, with anything, because the existing, the sites that have already been denied are likely another macro cell somewhere else.
Oh, okay. All right, we were just about to go to next steps. I do want to clarify one thing with respect to Ms. McLaughlin's comments about this not having to be an all-or-nothing situation. It's my understanding, the board member, any board member, they don't have to be the district person, could pull that and ask for additional review, is that correct? And at that time, if the board decided, or we had whatever discussion, we could get that third party, should we choose to? Okay, great. So if we could pull up next steps, and I would also say that with respect to our next discussion, it would be great if we could attach all of these answers, that anybody who's asked questions, we can make sure we're looking at the answers to the questions that we've asked. Okay, all right. If everybody can just look up there, I'm going to make sure that it says what I wanted to say, and anybody else, just check it, because we can check these off really quickly. Okay, does anybody have any questions or objections or additions? Yes, Ms. Tolan?
So do you have a webpage on this topic? Just curious. Yeah?
Yes.
Okay, so that would be a good place to house this, all this information.
Yes, ma'am, the, there's a website reference under the policy in your page there. But we do have a website that explains, page.
And if you use the website and use the search portion of the website and simply type in monopole, the landing page will show up, and it provides a lot of information about our process.
It's a page four on your presentation.
And we didn't just make that adjustment because of what we heard early in the previous presentation.
One, one comment about making it available online, there used to be, when we did in-house RF emissions going back six, seven years, the information was on the website. It was so voluminous that they had to remove it when they updated the website and stuff. So I'm not sure, again, 50 pages times 30 sites times every year. We can do some summary stuff.
Make a recommendation. I think there's one more next step, because I asked about what fees we are getting as a result, what schools are getting money, and how much. Right, I don't see it up there. Okay. So unless in someone, does anyone have objections to what's up there as next steps or questions? Because I think we're about to wrap this up. Okay, if there are no objections? Okay, if there are no objections, this meeting is adjourned.